I have a beginning cipher. So it's like, my O is up seven P for it. This time.
It's no phone.
And I get to learn how to administer the campaign. Beginning.
Okay. We'll now call to order the April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, City of Abilene, Kansas City Commission Meeting. Shayla, may we please have a roll call?
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Meisenberg.
Here.
Roll call's complete.
Okay, can we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the law.
All right, and our first item is the approval of today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, City Commission Meeting as written.
And I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Right.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is the consent agenda, which consists of the meeting minutes for the April fourteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting, along with three library board appointments.
Mayor Ryan, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion?
Yeah, real quick, I believe there is some ambiguity as to whether or not there was a quorum. I don't believe that the last item that was discussed, there was a quorum present. And so I'm pulling up the meeting minutes here to see how that's reflected. But I believe Mr. Martin's opinion in that to be legally deficient.
City Attorney Martin, do you want to address that?
Only if you wish for me. As an abstention, and under Kansas law and our rules of procedure, an abstention is deemed a vote with the majority.
Can you please describe for the public who might not have gotten that opinion? How you determined that I was present?
Quickly, when I present the city commission with an opinion, it is ordinarily confidential and subject to the attorney-client privilege. In this particular case, I have no objection to having you waive that privilege and authorize me to speak publicly with respect to the memo, share the contents of it. But I think it would be good practice when I send the commission, as my client, a memo with a legal opinion for you to intentionally waive the privilege. And I support that in this case, if if a majority of you do as well. I've thought about whether that's necessary, because if I had been as prepared as one could be, perhaps I would have recited what my memo says then and there, but I was not prepared to do so, and I researched and provided an opinion. And if you all wish to waive it, I did anticipate this moment and typed up what I think would be an adequate motion. If anyone wishes for me to approach and hand it to them, you could, someone could make that.
Sure.
Just to touch on the point that you made there, I don't believe that there was any indication in the email that you sent to the commission that that was intended to be confidential or for commission eyes only, and I'm just curious if there's a a practice maybe we should institute when that is the case or when that's not the case for future opinions and discussions.
So ordinarily, if if we're in the context of litigation or some other adversarial matter, I would intentionally label it as confidential on the memo itself. That's good practice. In this particular case, I wasn't sure whether you all would wish to to discuss that publicly, so I didn't want to presume anything. As standard practice for most attorneys, my email has a disclaimer in very small font at the bottom that indicates that it's likely transmitting attorney-client privileged information, but that's not always the case. In this particular case, I think if I'm communicating with the city commission as a whole, and the primary purpose is to give the city commission as a whole legal advice, then it is my opinion that that's privileged, and that's for your benefit. I don't hold the privilege. The commission holds the privilege, and therefore only the commission can waive it.
Okay. Go ahead and read the motion for waiver of attorney-client privilege. I move that the city commission approve a waiver of the attorney-client privilege with respect to the memorandum prepared by the city attorney regarding the effect of Commissioner Koloff's abstention on item, Agenda Item eight B at the April fourteenth, twenty twenty four City Commission Meeting. Upon approval of this motion, the memorandum shall no longer be subject to the attorney-client privilege, and the city attorney is authorized to publicly discuss and disclose its contents without restriction.
So that was a motion? I second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller? Myself, yes. Motion passes. Aaron, you may proceed.
Okay, and going back to your original question, Commissioner Kohoff, you would like me to explain essentially what I said in the memo for the benefit of the public?
Yes, please.
Okay. On April fourteenth, the last city commission meeting, the meeting was called to order as we normally do at four o'clock. A roll call vote was taken, and three commissioners were present, Mayor Ryan, Commissioner Witt, and Commissioner Kohoff. At approximately four twenty six PM, the commission took up item eight B on the agenda. All references to time that I'm going to describe are based upon my review of the recorded meeting. It's available on the city's website or the YouTube channel. So that was taken up at four twenty six PM, and that related to considering approval of a funding option for the industrial park infrastructure, CCLIP twenty twenty six project and recreation improvements in the amount of nine thou- nine million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's how it read on the agenda. All three commissioners actively participated in discussion of that item. And at four fifty seven, or thirty one minutes later, Mayor Ryan moved for, quote, approval of option one for the industrial park infrastructure, CCLIP twenty twenty six projects, and the recreation improvements in the amount of nine million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That occurred at minute marker fifty seven on the recorded video. Commissioner Witt seconded. And at that time that that motion was made and seconded, again, all three commissioners remained in the room, and all three commissioners remained at the dais in their seats. At minute marker fifty seven minutes and eleven seconds, Mayor Ryan stated, the motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? In response to that, Commissioner Kohoff, three seconds later, said, I'll be leaving. I'm not present. Three seconds later, Mayor Ryan said, Commissioner Witt, to which Commissioner Witt responded in one second and said, yes. One second after that, Mayor Ryan said, myself, yes. Two seconds later, Mayor Ryan asked Commissioner Kohoff. And at the time, Mayor Ryan commenced the vote. Commissioner Kohoff had stood up from his chair, but was behind the dais. And at the time his name was called, three seconds later by my count, Commissioner Kohoff was walking down the dais, or excuse me, walking down the ramp adjacent to the dais, right over here where I'm pointing. He then exited the meeting room without responding to the mayor's call for his vote, audibly, or as I could see in any way. He left personal items at the dais, which were retrieved later by another person and never returned. So that was an inordinate matter that you were voting on on item eight B. And on non-ordinance matters, a quorum of the city commission must be present, and a majority of a quorum must vote in favor of that item for it to pass. The city has adopted the Code of Procedures promulgated by the League of Kansas Municipalities, and I have that here. I'll cite to it a couple of times throughout. That's what I'm referring to. Kansas case law, as well as the Code of Procedures, adopts what I'll refer to as the common law rule established by case law, that a member of a public body who abstains from voting is deemed to have voted with the majority. Kansas case law also recites that if a commissioner or a member of the governing body wishes to oppose an item, he or she must affirmatively vote. No, and that remaining silent does not constitute a no vote. My memo, I won't read the cases and citations, but they're in there, and I've block coded some of them so you can see the full context of the court's language. But I think one of the main points I would make is that the Code of Procedures in Section eight B states that, quote, "An abstention shall be counted with the prevailing side." When the term is not defined, courts often look to Black's Law Dictionary, which is a legal dictionary that defines terms commonly used in the law. It defines the term abstain as to choose not to vote for or against something, especially in a parliamentary session. Kansas case law, as well as the Code of Procedures, state that members have a duty to vote. Going back to the facts, I applied that and concluded as follows: All three commissioners participated in discussion of item eight B, which lasted approximately thirty one minutes. All commissioners were seated at the dais when the motion was made and seconded. There's no question in my mind that a quorum existed at the time the motion was made and seconded. So we had a live motion before the governing body. Immediately after the motion was made, Commissioner Kohoff stated, or actually after it was made and seconded, Commissioner Kohoff stated, I'm not present, stood up and began walking away from the dais. Again, as his vote was, his name was called for the vote, he continued walking down the ramp and did not respond, thereby choosing not to vote, which meets the definition of abstain. Although he did not declare that he was abstaining, he remained silent, which the case law says is acquiescence rather than opposition. No conflict of interest or other justification was stated for not voting. Although Commissioner Kohoff stated, I am not present, after the motion was made and seconded, and approximately three seconds before the vote began, I concluded that did not have a legal effect. A member's presence in that context is determined by their physical presence, not by verbal disclaimers. Going back to Black's Law Dictionary, presence is defined as a close physical proximity coupled with awareness. At the time his name was called, he was physically present in the room, as far as I could tell, aware that the mayor was calling for his vote, and still chose not to vote. That physical presence in the meeting room in close proximity to the dais where his name was being called results in a quorum being met for all aspects of Agenda Item eight B, including the discussion, motion, second, and vote, was my conclusion. So, having reached that conclusion, the minutes from the meeting that you approved showed that the item passed three zero with the parenthetical that Commissioner Kohoff's vote, if you will, was through an abstention. I have copies of the memo if anyone wishes to see it.
What does the Code of Procedures say about abstentions?
The Code of Procedures in Section twenty nine states heading duty to vote. Members of the governing body have a duty to vote unless such member choosing to abstain has a conflict of interest or other conflict that appears to make voting on an issue improper. Any member who abstains must state, for the purpose of its inclusion in the minutes, the reason for the abstention.
Is that included?
Included in what?
Maybe you can repeat that last sentence for anybody else who might have missed it.
Any member who abstains must state, for the purpose of its inclusion in the minutes, the reason for the abstention.
Is that included in the minutes?
No. Because you did not state a reason for your abstention.
I would have to be present to abstain. I was not present. I told you, I specifically stated, I am not present, and when Mr. Ryan supposedly called my name, I can assure you I was completely unaware because I was not present. I was not present. I was not here. I was no more here than Commissioners Miller or Meisenberg.
Going back to my definition of presence, which I applied, presence is not determined by one's declaration. It is determined by whether you are physically present in the room and aware.
So I can be anywhere in this room and I'd be present?
Practically speaking, yes.
And you would, you're willing to hold that up for a nine million dollar bond?
I'm not being asked to do that.
You are. You're justifying a an approval of a nine million dollar bond. That's absolutely what's happening here. That's, this is on your shoulders right now.
I am applying the facts to the particular vote taken. No bonds have been issued. A vote was taken, and it is my opinion that you abstained. I respect, you do not agree with that, but if a person chooses to not state the reason for abstaining, I don't believe that that precludes a legal determination that they abstained. Otherwise, we would be left in a void, and I think in particular the Kansas case law saying that a member has a duty to vote, which is codified in our Code of Procedures. If a person doesn't state the reason for abstaining, then I would say that they are not complying with the policy, but they're still abstaining.
Well, to your point, you have to be present. Berg and Miller, Miller had no duty to vote in that regard, did they?
They were not present, no.
As, as I was not present, and I'm not sure if you remember what you stated, but you've made certain value judgments, and I wrote down the two that I caught, as far as I could tell, was one of them, and my conclusion. So I just want to make sure that we're perfectly clear that we're in a gray area.
I do not believe we're in a gray area. My conclusion is that the item passed with a three oh vote by virtue of one being an abstention. When I say as far as I could tell, I was referring to your physical manifestations of responding to the call for your name. I did not see any. I did not hear any audible response, and I think it's fair to acknowledge that that is based on my observation from sitting right here, but I also watched the video and tried to objectively assess the facts and lay them all out. There are no other facts that influenced my opinion other than those recited in the memo. And if the city commission wishes to obtain a second opinion, I respect that and will not question that. I would also note that there will be numerous other items in furtherance of and continuance of the bond authorization.
One of your arguments is that I was here for all of the discussion, which I think the, my fellow commissioners, two of them may not be aware, but that was also on the agenda as a discussion item, not an action item. I just wanted to make sure that was on the record as well. Yeah, I mean, it's only nine million dollars of taxpayer dollars. Let's roll with it. What do you say?
Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Commissioner Koloff?
Nay.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is public comments and communications, and there are six As of public forum. Anyone who would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda may do so. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into Item seven A. Consider approval of ordinance number two, five, dash, three, four, five, eight, and ordinance amending Chapter one, Article nine of the City Code of the City of Abilene, Kansas by amending Sections one, dash, nine, zero, three, and one, dash, nine, one, four concerning the Airport Advisory Committee and the Sister City Committee for the City of Abilene, Kansas. City Clerk Moore?
Mayor Commissioners, this is the ordinance that was presented to you at the study session at the last meeting. Just basically cleaning up some wording in the ordinance, changing minority to Omatama, and then on, and the bylaws for the sister city are approved by the sister city committee. And then for that airport advisory, they want to strike that, that members have to be within the city limits of Abilene and replace it within the Dickinson County area.
And just a point of clarification on the sister city one specifically. They do organize and operate according to their bylaws, and they are also duly approved by the governing body. Or?
I believe they want to strike that they're approved by the governing body and that, that the sister city would just approve their own bylaws, and that, that is to get it in line with the rest of the boards and the committees that we have in the code.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think that's accurate for all boards. In fact, I think we're approving like library boards, for example. Do you have a breakdown of which ones are and aren't approved?
I do not in front of me, no.
It's my recollection that we appoint numerous boards. I don't know if we can.
Commissioner, you will still appoint them. This is merely for the bylaws.
Do we have any further questions for city staff on this item?
Mayor Ryan, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two, five, dash, three, four, five, eight.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is seven B. Consider approval of the twenty twenty five local street maintenance project recommendations. Public Works Director Anderson?
Mayor, I would like to make one comment prior to this, and I want to clarify something from last meeting. I don't remember who said it or what, but it was stated that the previous Public Works Director did not leave a five-year plan for streets, and that is incorrect. I failed to correct that during that meeting, but Lon Trader actually did leave a six-year plan for streets and a six-year plan for water lines. We've just modified it based on conditions and based on what's been going on the last year plus, so.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brad Anderson, Public Works Director. I won't go through the whole spiel. This is the twenty twenty five local street projects. This is, basically, you were supplied all the information a meeting ago, and we had some discussion last meeting. I would like to get this approved today. If you have any questions for me, I want to get them on the schedule with our local contractors and get the ball rolling. So any major questions for me?
Really quick here, what's the distance of the melon overlay? How much surface are they doing a melon overlay on?
Twenty eight hundred foot long and thirty six foot wide. Any, any questions about the type of?
I'll just reiterate the point we made the last study session of just being cognizant of Barron Parade when that west side of Third Street, so I know you will be, but.
Yeah, and at this point, I'm just being a hundred percent honest, I, I think we're going to have a hard time getting on their already full schedule before that timeframe of fair. I've also thought about that a little bit since you asked me, and having a brand new, fresh overlay without some time to a hundred percent cure with some timeframe on it. It is on that particular day, a day where we have some heavy vehicles, spray applicators, semis and everything kind of rolling down that street. It should obviously hold it, but it might be best to wait till right after the parade and the fair. I honestly don't think we're going to be on their schedule before then anyway. Any micro-surfacing questions?
I'm excited to see you're doing that. I think that's a good step.
Yeah, I, I love it. City of Saline uses it. I use it a lot in my, my KDOT past. It's a very efficient way to get the most out of your money at a cheaper cost and give us some life preservation on some stuff.
Further questions for Brad?
None for Brad. What is our account balance on that? Sales tax, street sales tax? I'm pulling up my budget worksheet here. I'm not.
That I don't know.
We have approximately a hundred and ten thousand already in our street sales tax fund, and we anticipate, if you take that and and whatever you call it, take it out for four quarters. Yeah, it's about four hundred and forty thousand, but we're only budgeting three hundred and ninety thousand to be on the safe side.
So we'll have the appropriate balance by the time we need to pay for it?
Yes, definitely this year. In fact, the way the numbers are projected will have more than enough, and like I stated in the last meeting, that the, my ultimate plan was play with a safe number of three hundred and ninety thousand out of the four hundred and forty. Keep building that fund, and then, as mentioned, we've got some streets where we have to do obvious base work, and I kind of mentioned that you can, you can take the price of an overlay times three or four, so your, your price of your streets go up significantly, and then use that hopefully extra money that we're playing the careful game with and use that on a bigger project in the future. My, my plan is to keep rolling in a program like this, keep picking out the streets. I'd like to do a melon overlay on, on the next major project that I feel needs it, but I really want to continue the micro-surfacing and get in the plan and, and just keep knocking out several streets within the city over the next several years. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have further questions? Do we have an entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty five local street maintenance project recommendations.
And I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we will roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item on, your items for discussion is eight A, OCCK Annual Update. Earl Griner with OCCK, welcome.
Hello. It's already been another year, and this year I am not overly pregnant, so it is a little easier to breathe, so it's good to be back. Of course, you all would have gotten the presentation. Always like to start with that vision or mission statement. It's not for the passengers. Why are the vehicles on the road? I don't need to be here if the passengers aren't here, and the demand is definitely, definitely there. We want to promote and contribute to the success of our customers. We want to exercise and influence leadership in the creation of quality communities, ensuring our financial success so that our customers can be successful. A few stories that drive us. Every single day, we get to transport our senior lunch bunch. There's a great, great snapshot of the crew there. They get picked up, get to hang out with Tammy and Ricky, go see parts of town that they maybe have not had the opportunity to see in a while. They don't mind driving around a little extra to help the efficiency of the system, and then get back to their, to their place of origin. A little shout out to Ricky and Tammy. Last year, we had a little bit of gap in driver availability. We had to get some newness on, on board. We found Tammy, trained her up. We are so excited. Her, between her and Ricky, they help somebody get to Amanda's Bakery almost every single day for breakfast and a little socialization, but then also to physical therapies. They help people who maybe have been transported to the hospital overnight, get home from that emergency. You go there, buy ambulance, you don't get to bring a car and your keys along with that, so they help people get home. They also give tips about local enjoyment. Researchers that are at Eisenhower Library, they truly have Researchers that are at Eisenhower Library, they truly have the opportunity to change people's lives, but also, even if it's not life-changing, they get to help people sustain their livability in our community. An update on rides in 2024. We did see about a fifteen-hundred ridership gap that had to do with losing, losing a driver, but adding Tammy in and starting the year strong, we're already seeing a really, really great bounce back, especially in January and February. It was so stinking cold, so 2025 is looking to be another amazing, amazing year. An increase in rides to and from Garfield Home, that was a little call out. We're definitely creating some accessibility there. And then I also wanted to let you know that we are working very closely with Memorial Health. There were some efficiencies that we found on both sides. Some locations like Frontier Estates have their own transportation. We were giving a whole heck of a lot of rides to and from there, so we thought, hey, how can we work together to make this make the most sense with our vehicles? So from that effort, we have been able to maximize the number of people getting where they needed to go, but minimize the amount of trips for OCCK transportation there. Our ridership purposes have stayed pretty true to last year. Twenty-eight percent going to employment. That's the work, the skills training, coaching, interviews. Forty-two percent is that medical, and it's still such a blessing. Those, almost all of those rides are paid for by Memorial Health Foundation. And then that thirty, thirty percent other nutrition, getting to the grocery store, educational resources, taking kiddos to school once in a while. Maybe you're wanting to go visit and play cards with a, with a family member. So to our fiscal year 2026 calendar year request, I included a few more details. In this past year, we have hired a new CFO at OCCK, so we are gonna continue on, on braiding some of these line items that have been kind of squashed in to create a little bit more clarity for you as we go through. So a couple of the pieces have been called out on here, and as we continue our partnership, I will continue bringing more and more of that information for you. So our overall budget is expected to be two hundred sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred fifty. We're expecting about fifteen thousand in fairs, so that makes the local match portion our request to the city of Abilene at seventy-six thousand, one hundred eighty-five, which is about a four thousand dollar increase from last year's request. And then a breakdown of those numbers on the back, on that next sheet, to see how that fair impacts the, the thirty percent local match. Any questions?
I think as long as I've been on the commission, I've requested detailed, not just budget, but actuals for each year, and to date, I don't believe I've ever seen anything.
No, and that's what my hope is with our new CFO in place. We are gonna be able to provide those. My request is getting to you today. We did not have the time to prepare a document in presentation form. I can continue to, to work towards bringing those to you.
Thank you.
Do we have any further questions on this item?
One thing, and you might have stated it, so forgive me if I missed it, but I think I've seen some new vans around here. Is that, is that the case?
Yeah, so over the last, ooh, well, since, since COVID, KDOT has struggled to get enough vehicles to make it make sense for a manufacturer to fulfill those for the state of Kansas. So at the time that they were requested, it has been quite a few years, at the time that they were requested, till we got them now. You will see them rolling on the road. I do not have any additional charges to request because of the time that it took. KDOT was able to help OCCK match those at a lower cost, ten percent versus the twenty percent.
Yeah, I just remember in past yearly updates, you've given us some things about rider comfort and things like that for different people, and so I'm assuming the newer vans are more comfortable.
They are definitely more comfortable. Yes, yes. Chassis is a little bit different. It definitely has a slightly different feel on that start and stop. The downshifting gets a little bit tricky, but once you get in the rhythm, you're not driving your personal sedan or your, your own Tahoe, once you get into the rhythm of it, it is a very, very smooth ride for people. The speakers seem to be a little bit better. The only thing that we're recognizing, and Tammy, you might agree, there's no cup holders. The cup holders are not where they need to be, but that's the sacrifices that we made to just get a vehicle to put on the road, so we weren't driving something that was ten, fifteen years old with over three hundred thousand miles on it.
Have to look into retrofitting.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. We, we do almost all. The only thing we can't do in-house is completely replace a transmission, so we have even figured out how to put cup holders in buses. Absolutely.
Any further questions?
I just want to say you guys do awesome work. I've only heard positives.
Wonderful.
And I work in, well, I was a nurse for a long time, and you guys would come pick up patients, and I've never heard anything negative. Transportation makes all the difference in a community, so.
Absolutely. Thank you for saying that.
And I'd like to support that, and if you can just get us a detailed financial that we can review.
Absolutely.
And not just a statement, a quarterly statement we want, or my preference would be a breakdown of the finances.
Yes, I have spent time on the phone with him already at the beginning of this year. Obviously, a new CFO coming into a company that's more than just transportation. He's got a lot on his plate, but he definitely knows that that has been a yearly request from you, so he will, I'm sure he's been working on it, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, and our next item is nine A, City Manager's Report. City Manager Marsh.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Police Department offices will be closed this Friday from nine AM to two PM for a memorial service. The Union Pacific Railroad Crossing on Buckeye will be closed on Wednesday, April thirtieth, from approximately three AM, sorry, seven AM to three PM. A detour established by KDOT has been published. AT&T will be moving into the city of Abilene beginning this Thursday, May fifth, to begin the upgrade of their transmission line. They did not have an estimated length of time for that project. They've been currently working east of town between Abilene and Chapman, and as they enter into town, they'll be on the south side of Fourteenth Street till, to Vine Street. Of course, they'll be crossing Buckeye and also working in the, the easement there on the middle school and the high school. Once they get to Vine Street, they will continue on County Road until they get back around the curve to City Road, and then they will connect it at the AT&T Junction Building at the southeast corner of the railroad tracks there off of I-40, or excuse me, Old Highway Forty. And then on Wednesday, May seventh, schools across Kansas and the country will be celebrating Bike to School Day. The celebration is designed to encourage students and families to bike to school in their communities. The Abilene Parks and Recreation Office is sponsoring this event with volunteers from the city of Abilene, Impact Sports and Fitness, and Safe, Kansas Safe Routes to School. If you'd like to volunteer or participate and need more information, please contact Kelly Timbrook at the Parks and Recreation Office.
Quick question. What was the date on that Union Pacific Railroad Crossing closing?
This Wednesday, the thirtieth.
This Wednesday.
Okay.
Couldn't write that fast. Okay. We have any questions on the City Manager's Report?
Kind of adjacent. Mr. Marsh, you had stated that there was a process in place now for managing contracts. If you recall, kind of the discomfort we had, kind of being over the barrel with the VIVE contract, and you said there was something in place to manage those going forward. Would you be willing to share that with us at some point in the future? And maybe a list of all those contracts and proposed, or contract termination dates? Thank you, sir.
All right, our next item is executive sessions. First one is ten A.
I'll look to the city attorney. How much time do you think you need?
My agenda just froze up. Is that the personnel matter involving the city manager?
Correct.
Five minutes.
I move the city commission recess in the executive session for five minutes to discuss a personnel matter involving the city manager pursuant to KSA seventy-five, dash, four-three, one-nine-B-one for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The regular meeting will resume in this room at four forty-six.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we do roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff? Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We are in executive session. We will now resume our regular meeting from executive session. No action was taken in executive session. I will now move that the city commission authorize the city clerk to submit a legal demand made against the city manager to the city's insurance carrier for purposes of providing notice of the claim and invoking any and all applicable insurance coverages. Additionally, the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk are authorized to take any further actions necessary to cooperate with the insurer's investigation or defense of the claim.
And I'll second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we do roll call vote. Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Our next item is ten C, executive session number two.
I will defer to Mr. Marsh on the duration of this one.
All right. I move the city commission recess in the executive session for five minutes to discuss a personnel matter involving a department head pursuant to KSA seventy-five, dash, four-three, one-nine-B-one for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel. The open meeting will resume in this room at four fifty-five.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we do roll call vote. Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Myself, yes, motion carries. We are in executive session. Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are in executive session. Saying none, I'm going to roll call vote. Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Next item is public comments and communications. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission on an item not on our current land bank agenda, they may do so at this time. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission? Seeing none, we will move into item six, consider approval of a lot purchase agreement for three lots in Cedar Ridge Estates. City Manager Marsh, Community Development Director Zuck.
Commissioners, this was discussed several meetings ago. It was supposed to be on the agenda for last meeting. We tabled it until this meeting, but it's it's essentially the lot purchase agreement. You have a copy of it. It was drafted by the city attorney based on the ones we've used in Golden Bell Heights. And we just add it's here for approval today. So we can move forward. It was selling lots.
Do we have any questions for staff on this item?
With the lot purchase price, does the city retain all of that except for the twenty-five hundred dollar rebate?
Correct. Five thousand of it will stay with the city.
Do we have any further questions for staff?
Just to iterate, it seems to match what our discussion was.
Saying none, entertain a motion.
I make motion to move the approval of the lot purchase purchase agreement for the three lots in Cedar Ridge Estates.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Saying none, I'm going to roll call vote. Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. Our next item is adjournment.
So moved.
All second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Saying none, I'm going to roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Meisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kohloff?
Aye.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned.
But stick around for the study session.
I'll now call to order the our first item under two A is Ballfields Update, Sports Complex Committee. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kristen Anderson, licensed and practicing architect. I live here in the community. I've been contacted by the task force group to help them in their acquisition of a design build firm and advise until that they can get a professional project manager and design build contract team onboard. Prior to my involvement, the task force had put up an RFP soliciting bids for the scope of work and had then taken it down. With the understanding that they needed to do some additional internal work to make sure that they were prepared for the hiring of a professional. Um, since that time, I have been helping them review and gain work for the geotechnical and environmental study of the preferred site of preference associated with the project. And that I believe has been rewarded to the group. And we are going to be waiting for that report to come in. And while we're waiting for that time, we are going to be making the best of that time of making sure our proposal that is going out to other professionals and being posted publicly will answer some outstanding questions that can help get the project in the right direction moving forward.
Yeah. Do we have any questions for Kristen or anybody else have any updates that need to share at this time?
Uh, I'll share the the plain language explanation of Kristen being involved in the project. Of as everybody's aware, the RFP went up and then it got taken down. Kristen was looking at it and pointed out some of the things, and that's where we as a committee soon realized that we're outside of our expertise and understanding what things need to be out there to have a high quality RFP. And we also had enough unanswered questions that could get answered now, hence the geotechnical analysis. Things that have to be done anyways, but that makes sense to get done now so that we can have a more sure path forward for selecting the site for for the ball fields. So grateful for Kristen's involvement and subject matter expertise to help train us up, train up the committee to be good critiquers when it'll come around to the review phase. So. And just, I mean, it's for forsake a state in the obvious as Kristen being our licensed architect, but then also living here in the community, the built-in incentive to make this project the best it possibly can be. Um, I think there's there's good value added to the group from that. So.
Um, if I may ask maybe a silly question. Um, as a professional, I assume you usually work for money. Do we have some type of engagement to compensate? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would have appreciated if you volunteered, but I think you're worth getting paid for.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah. Do we have any further questions? Thank you, Kristen.
Thanks.
All right. Our next item is two B fireworks sale sale and discharge discussion. City Clerk Moore, Fire Chief Strunk.
Mayor Commissioners, uh, this came about from the requests that were made at the last meeting from Tony Fries and John Creedie for the fireworks. Uh, wanting to extend the discharge, sale and discharge through July fifth due to the holiday following on the Friday. An ordinance can be brought to can be drawn up to approve at the next meeting. You just need direction from the commission on the exact dates and times that you want. The the exact dates for the sale and the discharge and then the times for the discharge on those days.
There was some question about removing restrictions on sale of fireworks. When does that go into effect at the state level? Is that a July one effective date?
I believe it's already, oh, sorry.
Are you asking like the reduction in like the restriction of the time they can sell? Is that what?
Uh, not specific to this ordinance, but it's my understanding that the state of Kansas removed restrictions on the sale of fireworks. So essentially they can be sold statewide year round, subject to local restrictions.
Only in brick and mortar.
Yeah. So they would have to, uh, so that is partially correct. Um, they'd have to get a license through the state, and that's only if we was to allow it. Like, we can still regulate it, but the state's allowing it if we was willing to, but it would have to be brought up to a current like two thousand eighteen fire code. So.
So that law is in effect right now? So anybody?
It will be by they were doing this to have it in place for this fireworks season.
Okay. We don't know when that date is, but sometime in the near future. It's 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 morbid curiosity, really.
It'll it will be in place before June twentieth. I can tell you that because that's when they would be allowed to start selling even out of a temporary structure.
If it's helpful, I have it pulled up, the Senate Bill one nine nine, and it states this act shall take effect and be enforced from and after its publication in the statute book. I do not know whether that's occurred yet, but I think that could occur relatively quickly. And I'll see if that's occurred while you're continuing to talk.
Um, so I know I, after the last meeting, I sent and some recommendations, I think same adjourned, Chief Strunk. Chief Hatter, I think I included you on that as well. Um, my just general thought process, I just wanted to get it written down and sent on while it was at the top of my head. My general thought is opening up sales from June thirtieth to July fifth. And then discharge on July third, fourth, and fifth. For sure, the fourth and fifth, you know, eight AM till midnight. I'm 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 pretty lenient on the third. If we want to go eight to ten or eight to midnight. Um, I know most places will be closed on on Friday anyway, so. That does just the thoughts in my head. I wrote it down and sent it on just for an idea.
I'm agreeable to a more open allowance too, and kind of as a test for this year too. Again, like they brought up, you can always have a weather day in there too. Um, but um, being less restrictive in this year because we've also got the two hundred and fiftieth coming up the next year, which I imagine that will also be an incentive to shoot off a lot of fireworks.
Does anybody have any feelings about allowing them maybe during daylight hours on Sunday, the sixth? I kind of, I guess I feel like I don't want another nominee to fireworks, but if they're going off during the day, I'm I'm open to that as well.
I know last year, I think we had it. We allowed discharge a day later than sales and it got some feedback on that, that's for sure.
I think maybe one of the issues, if you don't allow to shoot until July 1st, people are going to, if they can start or July 3rd, if people start buying them on June 30th, they're going to be shooting them, whether they were supposed to be or not.
Are there, I know the county can allow them year round. What are the county restrictions?
Okay, we'll just had a meeting.
I was not able to make it to their last commission meeting, but my assistant chief went down there. And again, they were just in discussion at that time. We'll be voting on it at the next one, but they were in talks of maybe getting rid of to where you have to apply for a permit because there was no charge to that anyway. That information wasn't getting passed along to the fire departments anyway, so it was kind of unnecessary work. I believe they're thinking about getting rid of that, but as far as the dates they're allowed to shoot, I can't answer to that.
Okay. I know the county I grew up in, I think it was legal year round, but of course you couldn't buy them. If I'm remembering correctly, I'm looking at the calendar for 2024. The 4th fell on a Thursday. I'm thinking we did Wednesday through Sunday on that, like basically allowing it through the weekend last year.
No, it ended on July 5th last year for, sales ended on the 4th and the shooting went through the 5th. But the sale had started on June 30th.
So what was your draft recommendation?
Mine?
Yeah.
Mine, I just was kind of spitballing a little bit, but June 30th to July 5th sales and then discharge the 3rd, 4th and 5th. And I would be fine, 8 to midnight each day. So most people are, everyone's going to be off work, everyone, but that Friday anyway. So I don't see any reason to not allow it to go to midnight on the 3rd. I guess three full days of shooting Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Adding to that, sale was started at June 30th last year, but shooting started July 1st through the 5th.
Yeah, I would too, because I think Shayla's right. If they can buy them, they're going to shoot them.
Right. Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just want to, I feel like if we do the first and second, we should probably make it until 10.
Right, yeah.
That sounds good. Not until midnight. My dog would not appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm wondering, I guess, kind of the consideration that I had last year is that the weekends are, people are more readily available to do stuff. And so I'm wondering if it would make sense to do the Sunday and not earlier. I mean, I'm okay on whatever date you guys think for sales too, but I'd rather have one fewer weekday day and one more weekend day. If that makes sense. I don't know. We don't have any of our fireworks people here. I'd be curious to get some input from them and maybe I guess we're just in discussion. So we can.
I did have a chance to speak with one of them. The only thing he did say is he did, did not want to give up the 30th on sales just because other towns will be selling. So that's why he didn't really want to give it up. The 30th up to sell on the 5th was his concern on that. So I'll just pass that along since that was mentioned to me.
While you're up there, what, do you know what the other cities, surrounding cities are allowing?
I do not. I know just watching some stuff on the TV, it sounds like Wichita is kind of going through navigating what they're going to do still. So I don't, I don't speculate anyone's really got anything set in stone yet. Probably just kind of, I mean, this all came about just in the last couple of weeks that I was made aware of it. So I think it's still pretty, pretty new if anything changing.
I guess my, I'm not worried about Wichita necessarily, but if, I don't even know if Salina allows them, but I know Junction City does. And I just don't want to disadvantage the people who are investing in our community.
Salina will, they do have, they have tents all over, over there, but as far as their dates, I can't answer that.
When will we need to make a decision in a practical sense?
I don't know that there's a deadline on it. Of course, the sooner the better for the people that are going to be setting up the tents would probably be best. So just to be able to notify them.
And I'll defer to the city attorney, but I believe it'll take an ordinance to make that change, which requires what, a 14 day? Or is it, I mean, it's in effect once it's approved, but there's a 14 day protest period, I believe.
Not anymore on this type of ordinance. It would, last year we approached it as kind of a notwithstanding whatever the code says. We're also going to allow them on this day and this time, rather than amending the code to make it permanent. It was kind of a specific provision for that specific year that sunset and is no longer applicable. It wouldn't take much to dust that off and bring it back before you. And I think just a matter of publishing it. So, you know, once we get it before you and you approve it, I think it can be effective within a matter of days.
I would be curious kind of what timeline those folks need for planning. I'm guessing a lot of them are renting ground and that sort of thing to get those set up.
Most of them already have their, their places in, lined out because they're the same every year. We have received, I know at least one application already for a fireworks stand, if not more than one.
I know, just kind of going off the top of my head here, do we usually have about six stands?
I believe so, yeah.
My preference would be to wait. And see, you know, what's Selena and Junction. I don't know if there's anybody else we need to kind of keep an eye on, but mirror what they do or be more permissive if they're overly restrictive.
Yeah. And so maybe next meeting we can have, just keep it on the study session and present a couple of different options like what we've discussed and then so that away, that's something physical that can be shared with some of the fireworks stand runners, owners. And then here in a month or so, have something to approve. So.
Yeah.
I can do some checking.
I would like more feedback from the people who actually are doing the work. I know a lot of those groups support some of our youth programs and things like that. So I want to make sure they get the best opportunity.
And I know the one stand last year did not stay open. I don't even think on the 4th. Think they closed early on the 4th, but that's up to the individual stands.
Yeah. And for those of you that don't know, although they probably want to be open for sales, they do have to staff that tent 24 hours a day. So somebody is sleeping there every night. So on top of them wanting to make money, it would be a little bit of an inconvenience to add in too many days. So they're just, I guess might weigh in on their decision as well.
So just to clarify, do I know you want me to reach out to the surrounding communities? Do you also want me to reach out to the fireworks stand applicants for their preferences or?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yep. And that's, I mean, even if we allow sales for a certain, you know, week period, they don't have to be open every, it's not like we're mandating them be open every day. So if they want to start later and earlier, that's perfectly fine, obviously as well. So.
I think you kind of create a, they kind of don't have a choice. Once you allow anybody to do it, it's kind of like liquor stores, open it on Sunday. You can, you have a choice, but you may not be in business.
We have any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, we will move into two C, RHID discussion. Commissioner Koloff?
Thank you. So I think most of you are aware of the RHID at Golden Bell Heights. I know some of the mechanics of it are a little bit mystical. But the city commission, I believe it was in March of 2022, passed the ordinance approving the Golden Bell Heights RHID. And then subsequently, I have these numbers with property ID numbers and quick refs from the county. And I've got a request out to get a little bit more information. But the RHID was not established through the state until 2024. So essentially the city, in my estimation, missed out on all of the revenue that they should have been allowed under that RHID. And I was kind of hoping Mr. Marsh could give us a little bit more clarity on what happened there.
Well, you nailed it pretty good. Did not get turned in. And when we, we recognized when we followed up on it in the beginning of 2024, I believe. We realized it had not been established through the county and we took care of it and got it set up. But maybe miscommunication, new program, I don't, I don't know. I didn't go back and try to place blame. I accept responsibility for not getting it turned in in 2023 or for the 2023 year. If we're going to, I mean, I don't have any excuses. I'm not going to make any excuses. But once we found out that it had not been established through the county, we got it corrected. So.
Do you have an estimation on the amount of funds that were missed as a result of that?
When I initially did some back the napkin calculations, I figured it was less than $20,000, worst case scenario.
Because those were, I think those were finalized late in 23, weren't they? Those, those first houses on there.
They started in 2022. There was three of them that we may have gotten a full year's worth of that increment. But I don't remember off, exactly off the top of my head, but there was only three of them that we could have potentially drawn a full year. And I don't think we, it would have been a full year on all three of them. And that takes, that does not take into account, I calculated it based on the, the delta between what it was and what it before the houses went on and after the houses went on. And that did not take into account the fact that the state still gets their portion. That was, that was adding up all the, all the sales tax increase. And that we wouldn't get all of it anyway. So.
One of my larger concerns is with our, I'm not sure the right term for Heartland Housing Partners, but we're paying Heartland Housing Partners 15% of that revenue. And I understand that you're willing to accept responsibility and I can appreciate that, but I feel like a measure of blame goes to the person that we're paying an exorbitant amount of money to in addition to $5,000 per lot sale for the taxpayers to be footing the bill for the oversight. I'm not sure, Mr. Martin, if you have reviewed that contract with Heartland Housing Partners. I have, I guess some, while we're discussing RHID, I have some concerns, I guess. I'm not sure what the facts are. And Mr. Marsh, maybe you can apprise us, but my understanding is that Mr. Vogel is maybe an owner of some of the property out in Golden Bell Heights. Is that accurate or a part owner of some of the developments?
I am not aware that he is an owner of any of them.
Okay.
That's the first I've heard of it too.
But my understanding is, again, my understanding, not, not facts, is that he is an investor in that 12-plex. And I guess I have some concerns if that, I guess I'd just like to know if that is a fact, but I have some concerns about significant amount of incentives. I believe that qualified for MYH and KHITC. And again, I don't know.
Correct. Those have been paid.
Yeah. And I'm just saying, I think if we're.
He waived his, he waived his percentage on those apartments. So.
Is, would you guess that that's because he is a partner?
I have no idea.
Then I might look to.
I don't, I don't base in speculation. So.
Yeah, I don't, that was the, yeah, it's the first I'm hearing of it. I don't know that we would even have a record. That would, I would assume that would be in the entity docs of. I can't remember the name of the entity that owns it either.
I guess I just have concerns about conflict of interest. If he's supposed to be working for the city and he's really working for himself. I don't know what the consequences are within the contract or.
There's, I am familiar with the consulting agreement with Heartland Housing, having helped with that back in 2022. I have not reviewed it in preparation for that specific question. I'm pulling it up. And I'm not sure I'll be able to, you know, adequately answer it on the fly. My recollection is it does not have any sort of conflict of interest provision or prohibition in there. But I also recall there are other covenants, things he agreed to do and certainly there would be termination rights and breach of contract provisions in there, but whether or not those are implicated by anything you've described, if it's true, I do not know. I'd be happy to look at it.
And I'm fine with, like I said, I'm hopeful his living center of the county, but if we want to just kick that down to another meeting, I'm fine with that as well. Are you okay with them that on the next meeting study session?
What specifically, sir?
Just the review of the contract or maybe any, anything else that might be implicated, whether it's Kansas statutes or or others.
Yep. Happy to discuss.
Is that based, I guess generally around that contract with Heartland Housing based on the potential conflict of interest? Is that, I just want to.
Sure. I think there's a, I think there's a couple of issues. I think the conflict of interest is certainly one. I think the, there's a question as to whether he is diligently fulfilling the duties that he signed up for. If we missed out on a year of tax revenue due to his failure to guide us in that regard. I would say those are, those are two of the big things, but I think there's some, I don't know, those are really the things that are bothering me.
Yeah. And I, I'm looking at it here. I won't try to proactively describe everything, but I do think there's enough material in here that I can report out with a little more time to address those concerns.
Okay.
And it may be, it may be that I recommend an executive session to do that, just so you know.
Sure. Okay. Do we have any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, I entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Motion has been.
Sorry, I'll second.
Motion has been moved. Sorry, I heard it perfectly, but it wasn't through the mic. Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any further commission discussion? Seeing none, we do roll call vote. Commissioner Witt?
Yes.
Commissioner Koloff?
Aye.
Commissioner Eisenberg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Motion carries. We are adjourned.